Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 15th, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, let me begin by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select As always, our first order of business is public forum. Is anyone here for public forum?
I can see.
And no one's joining us. Everybody's busy. It's light out. Everybody's busy. For announcements tonight, we actually have a little bit of a show-and-tell announcement tonight, which is kind of exciting. So we have finally received the Hatfield 350th Commemorative Quilt. Maybe you'll help me with this. Just want to make sure it's right side up. This was handmade by Jeanette, and we can't remember Jeanette's last name, right? So it's really beautiful.
Oh, it is, indeed.
It will hang in the town hall somewhere. I'm not sure where this is going to go. But I just wanted to go through. Hang on, I took a picture of it so I could read it from my phone. Okay, so the blocks all symbolize particular things. So corn, which was a major crop in the early -- this is like Vanna, but he's gonna be like Vanna. In the early 19th century, which of course continues to today. The second block is the 350th logo. This represents tobacco leaves. The fourth block represents the wheel at the old mill, which is really nice. Of course, the town seal. And then we have -- this one represents beef. And I did not know that Hatfield beef has a -- not the store, but beef from Hatfield had a really great reputation, so much so that General Washington purchased beef from Hatfield for his troops. Didn't know that one. Let's see. The seventh one is the sawmill block, which is another nod to the succession of industry at the Mill River Waterfall. The white one in the middle down at the bottom is the legend that explains all of this. And then this represents the vegetables and crops that Hatfield's still famous for. So I think it's really beautiful, and we're really happy and proud to have this. And we just wanted to make sure we could share it with townspeople. They'll get to enjoy it when they're here in the building, but we thought it was worth recognizing tonight. And we didn't unplug ourselves from the microphone, so that's kind of a miracle. So we thank Jeanette very much for that.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, that's all I had. Did you have anything?
I had nothing, Madam Chair, thank you.
Spring ahead, that's right, okay. All right, so we'll move right along to approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 4th, 2022, and the minutes of March 8th, 2022.
Second.
Excuse me.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're gonna go out of -- a little out of order on our posted business. We're joined by Brenna Duquette from the Hatfield Housing Authority, who's here to give us an update on the recent improvements at Kapewong. There's been a lot of activity over there, so we're glad you're sharing some information about that with townspeople.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought it was important to come and just share what has been completed, what's ongoing, and what we're discussing in the foreseeable future. We've had a lot of talk about the parking lot, but that is not the only thing that we're doing over at the Housing Authority, also known as Kapewong. I gave you all a very long-winded version of it, but I'm gonna shorten it up. So a couple of the improvements are going to be through the MassSafe program, specifically Lean. And they have committed to installing mini-splits, or the air-source heat pumps, in all 44 units.
Wow.
So that's really exciting, at no cost to the Housing Authority. And so that's one of the biggest, most exciting things in the works right now. And aside from, you know, obviously being a far better heat source than our electric baseboard heat right now, it's eliminating tenants having to provide their own AC units and installing and removing, storing that whole thing. So very exciting. Also through that, we got just under $77,000 worth of upgrades to our weatherization. So things like sealing of the windows, door sweeps, door kits, just little things to help improve the weatherization of the buildings. So that was great. Once we did that, we were able to apply for a grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development. DHCD has a sustainability funding. You can apply for it every two years for up to $150,000. And so we have been afforded the money to install bath fans, which is, it seems minor, but it's a really big deal to not have a fan in your bathroom as far as moisture and things like that. So when the buildings were built, no one thought of that. So this is something that we're really excited about. And aside from bigger projects, some of the smaller things we've been doing, the community room has been getting some upgrades. So we had really old carpeting. We redid the flooring. We're gonna be purchasing all-new furniture.
Oh, nice.
And on the note of the community building, we're actually in the process, probably by the spring of 2022, installing an emergency generator that'll power the community building. So this was projected for 2023. We bumped it up because it was last year, 2020, Hatfield got hit with a couple storms, and we lost power. And at one point, it was almost 24 hours without power for Kapewong residents. So that was like, all right, let's move this generator up. It's now, you know, top of our list. So in the event of a power loss, obviously not a major one that's gonna last a few days, but even a few hours, residents will still have kitchen, bathroom, laundry facilities, TV, internet, and then just heat and AC if needed as well. So that's a really exciting thing in our future, too. So that's coming. And it's important to note that we are not doing all these projects, one after another, after another. I don't want to put the residents out, hey, you couldn't use your parking lot for three months, and now you can't use your bathroom for a week, that kind of thing. So we're not going back-to-back-to-back with stuff. But we are really striving to keep in line with, I think, with Massachusetts and the United States as a whole, as far as sustainability and really those energy improvements, and then just the health and safety and well-being of residents, even small things, security cameras on our community buildings, so we can see the parking lot and the entrances to doors, just little things like that. So I'm hoping residents appreciate it and aren't too overwhelmed by everything. It is, you know, something that was built in the '70s, so these changes are necessary. But I also don't want to inundate all at once. So that's why that's kind of staggered up until 2023. And I think the last and most important thing that I wanted to touch on has no monetary value associated with it. It's our tenant organization. So we're not -- DHCD recognizes what's called local tenant organizations, so we're not official yet, but I do see that happening. But as of right now, tenants organize themselves. Our tenant board member, Judy Shell, attends the meetings and then reports back to the board, which is helpful if going in front of the board is daunting to a resident, and they don't want to voice a complaint or concern to the whole board. Now they have an avenue, and, you know, she's a tenant board member. She lives there. She understands. So they have a different route to be able to be heard comfortably. So that, to me, is one of the more exciting things as well.
I think there used to be a fairly active tenant association over there years ago.
Some kind of organization, yeah.
If I remember correctly, so.
Right.
I mean, that's good.
Then kick-starting it again.
All good, really good.
Yeah.
And then the weatherization, I mean, with the costs of, you know, heating and all of that.
Absolutely.
Because that's an expense that the Housing Authority picks up, so that's really good that you put that down.
Definitely, everything's gonna be helping our bottom line, but also the goal is to obviously make the quality of life for tenants a little easier as well.
That's what I was gonna say, comfort, yeah.
And we want to make sure, you know, I just want to end with, we want to be integrated with the town. We don't want it to be, oh, this is the state-run housing authority. We still want to keep that cute, quaint Hatfield way of life as well, so.
Now, do you -- I know that it works differently. I know there used to be a waiting list there, but now it's not by specific housing, right? You have to be on the state list, and then you go anywhere. So like, you can't -- a resident can't ask to be on the Kapewong waiting list.
They absolutely can. The -- so.
You can go on the whole state list and identify that, right?
Correct, so absolutely. It's a statewide waiting list called CHAMP. And you're able to fill out one application and apply to multiple different housing authorities. I've seen people apply up to 200 in the state. Or you could just apply to Hatfield. And they do differentiate by local preference, veterans' preference, and emergencies. So really, the only people coming over Hatfield, residents who want to live in Kapewong, are vets and people who are homeless or other type of emergency situation, domestic violence, things of that nature. So it still is smart enough to say, you've lived in town your whole life, you want to live in Kapewong, you're going to come before somebody from North Hampton who just likes Kapewong, so.
I got you. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I mean.
Well, that's good to have that explanation, because I didn't -- that's not how I thought it was working. I thought it was.
Oh, you just get thrown on a list, and yeah. The only problem is, is it makes our waitlist very long compared to what it was when it was just people filling out an application, dropping it off at the office. I do find a lot of emergencies specifically are from Eastern Mass, and they've never been to Hatfield, they have no intention in living in Hatfield. So even though my waitlist is, we'll say, 500, only about 50 of those people actually want to live in Hatfield. And the rest are just putting their name and hoping something sticks, kind of thing, so.
Right, right. And so then ultimately probably decline it if it comes up.
Correct. So it's just more work for me, but I don't think that it by any means makes the odds for a Hatfield resident of getting housed any slower.
About how long does it take? I mean, I know it's variable, but I'm just.
So since I've taken over in 2019, I've seen a huge turnover at the Housing Authority. So I don't think what I've seen is reflective of, like, the pattern over the last 10 years. But I've been telling people, two years or less, just because I've been getting vacancies that quickly. I think it's, I'm just at that point where we have that turnover at the Housing Authority.
Wow, okay. Great. Excellent, excellent information. You're always moving forward and improving things, and we really appreciate that, and looking out for the tenants over there.
Of course.
Did you have anything?
I just want to thank you and the board for all these grants and stuff. Mini-splits are big for the residents over there.
Yeah.
I think it's outstanding, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do for Kapewong.
Thanks. I did want to feel the town out on that as well, because I don't know what our feelings are as far as eyesore of the building, but I will work with you guys and make sure it's not something that we can't all live with for the next however long years.
What do you mean, the?
Well, when you install them, I mean, there're gonna be pipes and things running, and probably a lot of construction, and yeah, so.
Right, yeah.
What bushes and shrubs are for?
Adds more trees, dreaded trees, and yeah.
Everything sounds great, Brenna.
The right kind of trees.
Everything sounds great. Thank you for all you've done. Can I ask one question, though?
Of course, yeah.
How did winter go with the new setup with the parking lot and people moving cars? And I mean, was there any same-as-always, or was there new concerns with the new layout?
I didn't -- no new concerns, except for from Vincent, my maintenance guy. He's the only one that's griping over the changes. But we actually got a new snow removal company, and they use a little Bobcat instead of trying to use a truck.
Yep.
So with those additional spots, it was no problem.
Right.
So it actually worked out really well.
Good.
And I hope it worked out for the town not having so many cars over here now. I think we only have two.
So, yeah, that's great, good.
And I'm assuming that everything worked out well if there needed to be emergency vehicles, because we had, you know, back when Steve was the chief, he was involved. I think Bob's on the call, I don't know if it's Bob or Carrie, but I'm assuming all of that worked out okay. Because there was, you know, questions about the turning radius there and everything.
Right, right.
But you don't know of any difficulties.
I haven't heard otherwise, and to me, no news is good news.
It's Bob. Hi, Bob.
Good evening.
Did you hear my question?
I caught part of it. I know it was about the parking lot and the turning, and everything was up to.
Yeah, just wondering, you know, there was -- yeah, there was a lot of discussion about the ease of emergency vehicles getting in and out. I just was wondering, since the project's done, what the experience has been so far?
So we haven't had any major issues getting in or out. It is actually a little bit wider in certain areas than it was before. So the actual access to get off of School Street is wider.
Totally.
No matter what, it's gonna be a little bit tight making the turn, just because our trucks are large.
Right.
But we have hoes, can always add more.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Just wanted to get some feedback on that.
Good.
Great. I know you have another meeting to go to, so we'll release you, but.
I apologize, but thank you.
We appreciate -- I really appreciate that you come in, you know, regularly and update us.
Absolutely. And we're excited about everything, so we're excited to share it. Yes, try.
It's really a nice asset for us to have here, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Brenna.
Excellent, thanks, Brenna. So our next item would be our COVID update, but Bob Osley has not shown up yet, so maybe we'll just move forward, and if he comes on, we'll backtrack. So that means it would be your turn, Julie.
Excellent.
Come on up to the microphone. Danielle, do you want to join her? So Julie Pokala, and of course Danielle Staniszewski from Recreation Commission. So you're here to talk about pickleball courts.
I am, yes. I am a new resident in Hatfield. I moved here two years ago, just a month before COVID, so. But I love Hatfield. It's a great town, and I love pickleball, and I'd like to bring the two of them together and really create a community around pickleball here in town. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the world. The Pickleball Association estimated it grew by 40% last year, 4.8 million people in the United States playing. And there are courts springing up all around the region, from the smallest is in West Hampton. In the town hall, they've got a court, and.
I know exactly where, too. I can picture it.
Yeah, it's like this basketball.
That basket, the old basketball court, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. And then down to Westfield's got six dedicated courts that are lit. People are playing day and night. And I've talked to a lot of people, well, I don't know a lot of people yet, but I've talked to many people in town, and they're excited about the idea of having pickleball here, both because the -- they're interested in the sport. It's a sport that's growing fast because it's really easy to learn, like, within 15 minutes, you can be playing a game and having fun, and then.
It's kind of a tennis, kind of a, right?
Yeah, it's like, it's so much fun. So this is the paddle.
Okay.
And the ball looks like this, almost like a wiffle ball.
Oh, it's a ball.
Yeah. The court is about a quarter the size of a tennis court. And it's easy to learn, like, people of all ages are playing it, but you can always get better. And there's actually professionals that play pickleball. They're trying to get it into the Olympics for 2028, because it is growing so fast, and people enjoy it so much.
I know people who do this, and they just absolutely love it. It's a great way to get out and have some activity and socialize a little bit. So you're looking to have?
Two courts on the basketball courts on School Street. And I measured them off, and there's ample room for two courts. And the people that I've talked to in town feel like it could really maximize the use of that space, that it isn't used a lot for basketball. And so it'd be nice to be, yeah, there's disagreement about that.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to be able to have space that could be used by a wider range of people, wider range of ages. The Recreation Committee supports the idea of doing it. I did hear an objection from one person, it sounds like it might be similar to what you're saying, is, so Miki Sanderson.
Who's joining us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, hi, Miki.
Yeah, so she likes the idea of pickleball in town, but is concerned about having any basketball courts, because.
And interfering with the.
Yeah.
Can I chime in really quickly?
Yeah.
So Julie came a couple months ago, or maybe a month ago, to our meeting, and we really liked the idea, but we think it's more of like a temporary spot. We would like to try and go for a CPA loan next year and possibly get like a permanent spot to actually have maybe a tennis court and a pickleball court, so.
Yeah, you can.
That's what's on our radar, so if we could do the basketball court, it would be temporary until we could build something official.
And you can put two pickleball courts on one tennis court.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, sure.
So you really need pavement, though?
Yes.
So I believe that the high school plays pickleball as part of their phys ed and gym course. So I'm wondering if a section of the parking lot at Smith Academy could be used.
I checked out all the parking lots, and they're just too cracked.
No, no, I mean paved. I mean set up and paved, and that would be the location, and that way the school could use them as well.
Maybe that would be the ultimate location, you know, but.
I understand the cracks, yeah. And by the way, we used to have a tennis court in Hatfield.
I know.
Two.
And they were all the time, people were playing down there. I used to go down there and play, and there'd always be a line. I mean, Father Coonan was there every night, playing.
That is definitely on our radar. I think it would be great to have space that -- I've talked to Judy Strong about it, too, on a couple spaces we threw out, or, I don't know, about behind the center of school, like behind where the softball is. A better spot, I think, would be back by HES, maybe behind the community gardens. I don't want to mess with the rental of that farmland or anything, but just a couple of spots we've talked about. But you're right, the parking lots right now, they've gone capital for years.
Well, I'm just wondering, is the size of the tennis court, that's not? If it's a matter of fixing up a section, all the parking lots need to be redone. I think everyone in town knows that. But I'm wondering if even short-term, which could ultimately be long-term, that would be, there's plenty of parking, obviously. It could be used by the school, it could be used by people. You could probably set up more than two courts in, I'm just thinking of that corner.
Look, can I just?
Yeah.
So I think that these basketball courts are used a lot, and maybe it's gonna be a little slow-going. You know, there was some, we had to shut them down for COVID. There may have, maybe people got a little out of the habit of using them, although I'm sure last summer and fall, they were able to do that. But in my, you know, my travels, I always saw a lot of people using those courts. But again, probably mostly in the evening, you know, you'd see the pickup basketball games, so.
It's a timing thing, right?
It could be a timing thing, but I, but my.
From a basketball pickleball.
I just want to add on, though, that if you put them on the property of either of the schools, you know, people aren't supposed to be on school grounds during school hours. So that means someone like Julie, who might want to play on a Monday morning with some friends, is really not supposed to be there.
Right.
So I'm not sure that locating it either of the school locations is really where to go. And my concern with behind HES is now we're gonna have, those are gonna be condos. You're not gonna be able to park back there, like, we're so used to driving back and parking for the baseball diamonds or whatever. So I'm not sure that property, not to mention that's, you know, right basically in someone's backyard now.
Yeah.
About the basketball courts, it could be possible to set up times that pickleball can only play, like, during, when school's on, up until 2:00 in the summer, maybe just in the morning, so that it's really dedicated.
Oh, I think there's a way to make it work and share it, particularly if you're thinking it's sort of a temporary spot. I mean, I'm all for it. I'm all for getting them put somewhere. That's the obvious place, that we could make this happen right away, so people could start doing this, and then we need to, you know.
And we can do it for free, because friends of mine have laid down lines all over the place, and they're willing to come and do it for free, yeah.
And so they could just be laid right over the basketball?
Yeah, yep, it's easy, there's.
And there's no net, so I don't.
There is a net, but it's a portable net.
Oh, it's a portable net?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So how would we have a portable net? Like, how does that work? Because you can't just leave it there, right?
Yeah, so like, there's different models. So in Haydenville, people just bring their own nets, like I own a net.
Okay.
But in other places, like at Hampshire College, we have a, there's a storage box, and we have the nets in there, and then we have a combination lock.
Okay.
And I'm actually, I talked to the principal at Smith Academy today, and Dina Pulvereri is laying down lines for three courts in there. And so what I'm talking about is starting to have people play there and pay, like, in the evenings, pay $5, and we can pull that money together to buy nets, so it wouldn't cost anything for the town to have equipment.
So you have a location up there for them?
Pardon me?
She just started talking to him today, Dr. Terskow, about getting in there, but I don't know the likelihood of, are you gonna be able to do that in the summertime?
No, this is just like, I want to start, I want to start.
Like right now?
Building a committee, building a community in the evening.
So while schools in session.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
So I guess I, I think we could just completely overthink this.
Yeah.
I think in its simplest, it's a request to put some in for now, and people just have to figure out how to share that resource. And I think that can be done fairly easily. You know, maybe put a sign up that says, you know, please be courteous and, you know, share the space so that everybody has, you know, fair access to it.
I think it would only work if a kid, it's used when the kids are in school, because when the kids get out of school, one of the first places they go to are the basketball courts.
Well, that's true, in the afternoon. But in the summer, I'm not sure who's down there playing and what's going on, you know. So I think, I'm all for putting them in there with the idea that it's kind of a temporary spot, because, I mean, tennis courts are a much bigger deal. They have to be fenced in.
Yep.
And, you know, so you're talking about a much.
I feel like it should be, like, even this should be fenced in.
I've played on a million.
Because otherwise, you're probably chasing the ball.
Yeah, yeah.
I play all over the place, and most places aren't fenced in, so, no.
Yeah.
And I've chased balls all over the place.
Right, right. So, I mean.
Julie, could I ask another question? Just given this room, I'm certainly familiar with and heard about pickleball, never seen a court, though. So if this room, and I'm not saying to set it up here, I'm trying to visualize the size of what a court would be.
It's 20 by 44.
Okay.
So.
The back part is.
Two-thirds, probably this width and.
20 across here in this room.
Yeah. And then that's the court itself, and then there's usually, like.
Yeah, gotta be able to run outside of that.
Exactly.
Yeah, like, ten, right?
34 by, 34 by 64.
So you'd be able to fit one on this, two on that space?
Easily.
Okay.
I think it would be.
That's about like 100 by 100.
Yeah, I think it would be, and you've probably already done it, but maybe we can put cone, I would just like to see the dimensions, but I'm a supporter of pickleball.
Sure.
Just so you know. But I think it would be nice to see the space out there, like, if the cones were set up, you know, hypothetically, or what, realistically, of what a court size would be.
Sure.
Or whether, or some sort of, you know, paint that washes off in the rain, to have an idea of where the four corners would be for each of the courts.
Sure.
Type thing or something.
Would we, would you want to set up a time to, to do that?
Yeah, or, or whenever it's convenient for you and then just, you can let me know and just say, well, you can just say, Brian, it's, it's, it's done. Go swing by.
Sure.
As long as we use some sort of chalk or something that'll wash off.
I've got, yeah, I've laid out chalk on my driveway.
That'll wash out in the rain, because we don't, and, and I don't mean the whole court, I just sort of mean the, the edges, yeah.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Oh, I don't mind at all.
Okay.
Just need your contact information.
Yeah, it's Brian Mo.
Uh huh.
You know, my email, bryannmo@horizon.net. Or you can always.
M U, Brian, M O R or Brian?
M O.
M O for the email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. B R I A N M O.
Okay. All right.
And, and that way, we could just, you know, we could have an idea, you know, and I also think, I could have a conversation with the DPW director.
Okay.
I mean, maybe there's a place we just haven't thought of that, that's fairly decent, that just needs a little bit of work.
Yeah. People have suggested places and I've driven all around and it's like, uh,
I know.
It's just, people think a surface is good and then it's like slanted or cracked.
Well, that's what happened.
Because we had those courts and they were beautiful and they were there for years. We, you know, when I was in high school, even in college, I used to go and play tennis there sometimes. And then there was, I guess there was no money for maintenance.
Right.
And eventually, they all started heaving and then, you know, once a tennis court has a crack, no one's going to play on it because it's dangerous.
The grass is crawling between the cracks.
Yeah, it was really, the fence got all nasty and, you know, they just got completely let go. And it's too bad because they were pretty nice courts.
Yeah.
And we used to have a lot of fun down there.
We play on the courts at Hampshire College and the, my friends are just so dedicated that they're filling in the cracks, keeping the grass from growing. I'm sure that would happen here if, you know, X years from now.
It would be great to have a little, somewhere where maybe there was two pickleball, two tennis courts. That would be so fun. I think townspeople would use them like crazy.
We just have to find a spot.
Yeah.
And some money.
So, so what would be the process? I know Brian wants to look at what it'd be like. What would be the process in terms of getting approval?
Well, I think, I think if we have support and can figure out, I'm speaking for myself, I think, and I, I think you have the support of the board, but we just need the logistical, to figure out the logistics, right? Of, of who can use the court as, as which sport, when. I, I think that's probably anybody's biggest concern, whether they're, uh, sitting in this room or if they're watching on TV is just, uh, because it, you know, we, we always have this conversation here and it, it's the same about fields when it comes to baseball and softball. It's like, we're a farming community, we should have a ton of fields, but, you know, there's still only a limited number of spaces that you can do certain activities.
Yeah.
And this is one of them that needs, you know, you need concrete or asphalt or something to play pickleball, so.
I mean, I guess my feeling is if you, if we have them there, it's just going to be a matter of just common courtesy of.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
If you're in a, you know, basketball game, maybe
Yeah.
cut it a little short if people come for pickleball
Right.
and same, you know, in the reverse.
Absolutely.
And that's how it worked down at the tennis courts.
Right.
You know, you could play all night if no one showed up. If people showed up, you did the right thing and finished up your game and gave other people a shot, so.
That's how it works in Haydenville. It's a combination of basketball, tennis and pickleball. And you, you go over there, it's being used, you say, uh, how much longer are you going to be playing? So it, it, it doesn't end up being.
People get it.
It's nice because if it's, you know, you, Hatfield's small enough, too. If you drive down and they've just started a basketball game and they're saying, hey, we just got started, we're going to be here a while, you just go home and come back later or.
It's like putting your quarter on the pool table, right?
But you would be, yeah, exactly. It would be, um, you know, best probably used during the day
Yeah.
for pickleball.
Yeah.
Because it seems like those summer nights were pretty busy over there.
Yeah, basketball courts.
With basketball.
Yeah, like nobody, nobody or 50 of, or 50 kids.
I'd really like to see that, you know, back. Because it was really good for the kids and they had a lot of fun. It was all age groups, all playing. It was really, really nice, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you brought it up to us and I'm, I'm, you know, Danielle, thanks to the Recreation Commission for
Yeah.
being supportive of this and just looking for some new, you know, recreational opportunities for people in town. It's a perfect CPA project.
Yes. Yep.
How long does it take to set up the court? I mean, are, are you looking for permission tonight or just wanted to lay the groundwork and see how we?
I'd love permission to put down the lines. Yeah.
Well, can we, how about if over the course of the next week, Brian wants to see how it looks proportionately? And we're meeting again next week, so we could decide, because it's coming up on nice weather. We don't want you to miss too much nice weather.
Well, I'd have been out there today, that's for sure.
So if we could get that taken care of in the next week and then make a decision next week about
That good?
just putting the temporary ones there?
Excellent. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
It's nice to, uh, see what town, like, uh, what these meetings are like and, I love this town.
What, you mean you don't watch it on TV every week, Julie? I'm kind of disappointed.
I'll start, I promise.
Julie, you said you're new, you've only lived here two years, so I'm new and we've lived here 23 years, so I'm still new. These, these guys aren't new, but, um, I am, so.
I'll be dead before I'm not new.
Nice meeting you as well.
Thanks so much for bringing this forward. I appreciate it. So it looks like Mr. Osley still is not here, um, so we might as well move on to.
Was he definitely, I mean, did he know he was supposed to be, because there's no, nothing new to report, right?
Well, I had.
I mean, I didn't, I just don't know if he.
The Board of Health met last week, right? And, yeah, Karen and I had talked, um, last week and, and they met there.
Because he's usually pretty punctual.
There was a slight increase.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there, there is.
There's no mask mandates, it ended in the schools, everything's done, so.
Right.
And we'll get a new, we'll get a new call tomorrow, being a Wednesday.
We don't really need him to come on, to be honest, if we're going to all get the calls on Wednesdays.
Well, no, but there was some discussion last week at the Board of Health meeting regarding, um, the robo-calls and, and I had thought that perhaps that should be a discussion.
Oh, so we can, we can, we can do that. So I talked with Chief Flaherty in our COVID committee, which has one of the members of the Board of Health, myself, Chief Flaherty, Marlene.
Because the chief had recommended.
Right. And, and depending on what happened this Wednesday, tomorrow, uh, the feeling was with no more mask mandates and if the numbers continue to stay low, um, at least Bob and I didn't, and we haven't spoken to anybody else about it, but didn't feel that there, there was an advantage to call, to having a robo-call anymore, right?
I agree with that. We suspended them before and brought them back when, you know.
When we needed to.
And, and now, to be honest, so many people are doing at-home tests that there's no, you know.
The numbers that have been reported aren't necessarily accurate because they're only whoever goes and gets the PCR test, so.
So I'm, I'm fine with discontinuing that.
All right, so we will do it. Um, chief, right? That's what we talked about, so we'll do the call tomorrow. And maybe we can make an announcement that this will be the last call for the time being type thing, or unless something, you know, unless we need to reach out or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, due to the, the trend of low numbers
The low numbers, yeah.
And, um, you know, if, if, if it's ever necessary, we'll, you know, reinstitute it.
You good with that, Bob? Okay.
That sounds great to me.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for doing that again.
Yep.
We appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, so let's get into, um, appointments and resignations. So we have received a resignation from Ernest Fitzell from the Police Department that we need to accept.
Make a motion to accept the resignation from Ernest Fitzell with regret.
And I'll second that and wish, wish he and his family luck because, uh, it appears that at the time constraint was he and his wife just gave birth to their fifth child, so.
Wow.
Wow.
Good luck.
Wowee. So, um, a motion's made and second, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
I would just like to thank him as well
Yep.
for his service to town and wish him luck. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the nomination of Scott Pomeroy as the Inspector of Animals for
Animal Control Officer the previous week.
Yeah, this is animal inspection, right?
Yes, it is.
This is for the, um, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources.
Yep, same agency.
So he's been doing this for years, he's very good at it. We are so grateful
We are indeed.
that we have him to be able to, um, do this.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Scott Pomeroy as Inspector of Animals.
For the Department of Agricultural Resources.
Well, it's, no, it's for Hatfield, but it's.
I'm just reading them.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
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 And thank you, Scott.
Did you second it?
I did second it.
Oh, okay. Um, a motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
A man of many
Yeah, he's.
animal-related hats.
Okay. And then, Marlene, you're, it's time for your report.
My goodness, we are moving along here.
I know.
Okay, so, we have received, I, I briefly brought, brought this up at, I think, two meetings ago, um, but it wasn't this request, the specific request was not on the agenda. Um, so I, I would ask if, if the Select Board would support the use of Smith Academy Park for the Bad News Jazz and Blues Orchestra. And this would be on Sunday, September 11th, from 5 to 7 and a rain date of September 18th.
Sounds great.
Yep, sure does. Love the name of the band.
I'd love to see a lot more events over there in that space.
Yep. I want to see your pavilion built.
And speaking of Smith Academy Park, we had had a.
Do we need to vote on this or did we already?
We didn't vote on this.
Oh, no, you haven't voted.
We, we need to vote, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the concert to be held on September 11th and with a rain date of September 18th at Smith Academy Park, from 5 to 7.
Second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And so on, sort of related to that topic, we, um, at a previous meeting, we had a conversation about having a form, a type of form for users to, to, um, complete for, for use of the park. You have before you a, a draft, which I have asked Town Council to review, so you have his edited version. And then you have, uh, actually another version that has been updated. Brian had noted that the form did not reference a site location, so I thought, geez, that is rather important. So, um, so I, I, I got thinking that perhaps there are other uses for property, you know, our streets for, for, uh, bike events, uh, you know, road races.
Right, road races.
And, so at the top, you'll, you'll see that it does reference, um, parades, carnivals, festivals. And it's certainly your discretion if you, you like this type of form for any event or if you just like it specific to Smith Academy Park, we could do that.
I, I mean, I, I like this form, but still the question becomes, at the park, who oversees all these functions and stuff?
Yes.
We still haven't determined who's going to sort of manage or oversee
Yes.
And there's been some discussion, so.
And I don't know if that's going to, whether we got to create a committee to do this or appoint another board or something to, to figure that out. I think we got to seriously find some time to discuss this and, and come up with some ideas or brainstorming session in order to determine who's going to, you know.
It could be a single person, it could be, uh, one person from the Select Board, it could be a board, you know.
Could be a board, could be whoever, yeah.
Right, exactly.
I, I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Diana.
I just was noticing where special events, it doesn't list concerts in there, which is probably the most obvious use of that space.
Yes.
Up, up in the first sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's sort of like site location missing, isn't it?
Probably, I mean, it should maybe say that, but it does say special events. But I agree with Ed. I've, I think that in the future, um, the park could become very, uh, popular and used by all sorts of different events, which brings the next point up for having a person or a committee or somebody in charge of this, of what if in fact they're willing to rent access to the bathrooms? Or they need extra power for something? I mean, it's one thing to have a, a, a band with no electricity show up and do their thing, but if it's, it's something else, if in fact they need access, for whatever reason, to different things. So, you know, it, it's a building use for, or it's an event forum, but then we might need a building use for, like the schools have, if somebody rents out the kitchen or the gymnasium, that type of thing. You asked the question about other events in town. I think we normally only know about events if they're at the pavilion and we've approved a liquor license. Other than that, we don't really know what's a, an event that could be using the streets of Hatfield for biking or walking or, I don't know that they need permission.
The road races come before us.
I don't think they need to tell us if there's, um, that we have to approve, I mean, it, it all depends what it is, right? If, if they need police.
Some road races organized, they start from the Lions Club Pavilion, so they're using it and they have contacted my office or the police.
The gentleman who was doing the other one like a year from now or something, he was way on top of, like.
The bike, yeah.
Yeah, he asked for permission, so.
Yeah.
So, but I think we need consistency, whatever that is, whatever the consistency's going to be, we need to be consistent.
The big thing I'm concerned with is trash. I mean, who's going to clean it up afterwards?
We don't have receptacles out there.
Is our DPW going to get stuck cleaning it and going about, I mean.
I mean, I think that's why, I, I, I mean, I think in the 350th Committee, there's been some discussion about how we could be of assistance, maybe some of us, helping move that forward, so maybe I'll talk to some of them.
Thank you.
Not me, but maybe some of, you know, let me, let me make some calls.
Take that, Diana.
I will, I will make some calls and see sort of what the, because I did miss our last meeting, so I'm not sure what, um.
I, I would just like to note that Tom Mullen, Attorney Tom Mullen, did mention I would just like to note that Tom Mullen, Attorney Tom Mullen, did mention that if there is an individual or board or whoever it is that oversees planning, organizing these events, that if someone is denied, that there is a process for the person to appeal to and it would be the select board.
Okay.
Should be the select board they would appeal to.
I'm just curious about this one thing about if music is played, the sponsor will furnish evidence that permission has been received from the copyright holder? Is that typical?
Yes, that was something Town Council had recommended.
No.
I mean, that doesn't.
Every wedding band and DJ in the world does that.
That's what I was gonna say.
I mean, in a perfect world, it might be great to have that, but that's not what's up.
It was interesting that he raised that because it was something never heard before.
That issue doesn't reflect on the person renting the property out or it would be the performer.
I think he's looking out for the town, you know, whether there could be some liability because the individual performed.
So I think, I think what the difference is, honestly, is if you have a concert, which the COA has all the time, I've played a million of them myself, we've all been to a million of them, that's one thing, to hear music, right? And when bars and restaurants have music, they have to pay ASCAP something, you know, there's other things. I think what this is referring to, I think, is like when the school does a play, they have to pay them.
Oh, no, I understand that.
They have to pay for the rights. So I think he incorporated everything. I know, but it's saying.
If music is played, I mean, that to me means if you have TJ and the Peepers out there playing, you know, they have to prove they have copyright.
That's not up to us to do that.
I don't think it's up to us.
If they play a song that was recorded.
Right, if they, like, they got permission of Elvis to play.
Yep, that's Elvis's problem, not Brian, Diana's and Ed's.
He's not gonna mind, Elvis is not gonna mind.
Well, you know, just thinking, Council on Aging had an entertainer out here last fall.
Yes.
And he does like Frank Sinatra.
Of course, and I get what Tom's doing, you know, as the Town Council, he's making sure that we're covered, but I believe that that is something that we're not, we don't need to get into.
I mean, that's pretty much everything that's performed here in Hatfield, there's covers of everything.
Unless you're doing your own music.
I mean, the Bonfire has performers that cover other songs, like, I don't know how that works. It happens all the time. So I don't know how that.
Marlene, they can't hear you, they want you to speak up online.
I've got my mic.
If that mic doesn't go into what the online thing is. This is for John's recording, so if you can just speak up, then they can hear you.
Yeah, our mic goes in.
No, those mics only go in my recording.
Yeah, but some, but they must be able to hear us or they'd be complaining. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's the same setup.
So you can just talk a little bit.
So is it?
My mics do not feed the web app.
I, I.
My mics only feed YouTube.
So Marlene just needs to speak louder to that, to that mic in the, with the blue button on it.
Oh, okay. I will do that.
Less.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't think we should approve this tonight, I think this warrants a little more discussion in the park.
No, and please don't think that I was expecting you to. It's just sort of a draft to put out there and to sort of move it forward, you know, and I understand this really is going to evolve, you know, it's just.
Let me make a couple calls this week and talk to some people.
Well, this is a work in progress, we still gotta.
Right.
It is, it is.
Sit down with some people.
I do think that the first and easiest thing that we can do is put a calendar, a calendar like that, a year's worth of calendar, in an office here in Town Hall. So if I want to use it on September 15th, I can come in and look and say, there's already something booked, I can't use it September 15th. We can worry about the detailed part of it, yeah, but you know what I mean?
I have a community calendar on the website.
Yeah.
Anything that gets approved is automatically put there.
Oh, so that's good. So not only people interested in maybe using the space, but people looking for something to do.
Right, and Jerry at the Council on Aging, all of her things, I put some in, I just showed her how to do it, so.
But not every, so, and I think that's great. But I could be driving by and say, hey, I forgot to come in. So we need to be able to come in, somebody needs to be able to come in and look at a giant board and see that, or talk to somebody who can say, sorry, September 15th's already got something on it at 6 o'clock. That's okay, I want it at 1. So somebody's gotta go in and put 1 o'clock. I mean, I just don't want double booking is what I'm trying to avoid, potentially.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or triple.
Let's keep this sort of on the agenda.
Okay.
Because it's coming up on the season when people might be.
Tis the season.
Wanting to use that space more often. Okay, Marlene.
All right, and the next item I have, and I would expect that either we can defer this and have a discussion with the Finance Committee, or I can just briefly talk about it now, whatever, whatever you like. We have received additional requests for use of the ARPA funds. And the Select Board did approve funds for account, for the, for the accountant.
Are we gonna take this up with the Finance Committee?
So yes.
So then let's skip over it now because I'd like to get to the.
I expected you would want to talk with them about it.
Yeah, so let's, because.
And the school also has a request.
Yeah, so I'd like to go a little out of order and see if we could speak about the memorandum of agreement between the Historical Society, because, you know, I don't want to run over too much because we have people coming in at 6:30 and a lot to get done. So if you'd like to join us up at the microphone, that would be great.
Hi Amy.
So we have this draft, this further draft. Well, we can't close the door, right? Just tell them we just need a minute. So the floor is yours.
Excuse me?
Did you want to speak to this or?
No, I just, you know, felt like I should be here.
Right, right, right.
You know, answer any questions. I made the edits that you had requested.
Right, there were a few things, it's been a while.
And define the committee. And I wanted to see if, you know, we can get this approved and get it going. It's been dragging on just for a cover.
One item that was sort of lacking was a term, and so that has been added. And let's see.
There's a term and you wanted to, wanted us to define the accessions commission.
That's right, that's the other one.
So I defined that as three, three voting members. One from the commission, you can see it's on.
On the third page at the top.
Yep, in blue.
Second to last page.
So the, okay, I do see that, thank you. Regarding the term, if the agreement would be initially for one year, followed by recurring three-year terms, but that would have to be, we'd revote that, correct? After one year.
Right.
And then with the, with the hopes that at that point, we'd start going to three years.
Yeah, you know, the idea to see how it works and, you know.
I mean, I would just say it's for a year. Because that, I mean, we can't in this, I don't think, make any, if we're saying it's a year, we can't make.
Yeah, right.
For beyond that year.
Okay.
But I, but it's the intention then.
I get the intention.
It would be a longer, a longer term after the first year.
Right.
Okay, I just want to, you know.
It could be two, it could be three, it could be five, I think that's kind of what we're trying to say, you know.
Right.
Or it could be a year. I mean.
Okay.
Rather than have it spelled out, I think it's more, it's a one-year contract period with the hope, basically, with the hope of it followed by a three-year or something like that.
With future terms to be negotiated.
Okay.
Future.
Okay, yeah, because I was gonna say, I don't want you to say it's one year and then.
It's just a verb in it, it's not like we're trying to not.
No, I just, yeah.
It's the wording, I think.
Okay.
So future terms to be negotiated?
Well, I think, just so Amy and the Historical Commission and Historical Society, we're just trying, we're saying all this because we're just trying to clean up what the contract or the agreement says, and its initial one-year term shall be effective from the date of the agreement, followed by a renewal of however we want to word that or something.
I would just leave it at that because that means we have to discuss it this time next year. Hopefully, we'll, you know, have gotten somewhere with what we're gonna do. I would just, if it's gonna be a term of one year, it's a term of one year.
Okay, so period after.
That means we have to revisit it.
Okay, so period after agreement.
Well, I do feel like I want to have something in there that says, because there needs to be an ongoing agreement. I mean, I, you know, if we have this for one year and then, what, nothing? I mean, I just feel like I do want some idea that the point is in one year to discuss this and, you know, make any changes, but there does need to be an agreement, I think, going forward. I just think, I'm not sure why it's a problem to have wording that says, you know, to be revisited in one year, you know, or negotiated in a year.
Well, that, but that's different than what this says.
Right.
So, I mean, putting it in for a term of one year means we have to talk about it in a year. So I think it should be, I don't want to lock us into any kind of two-year, three-year, five-year beyond that. It should just be.
The way this is worded makes it sound like a four-year agreement.
Yes.
The way it's worded. An initial one-year term shall be effective from the date of the agreement, followed by a recurring three-year term. There's no, there's no break to say after a discussion.
So it should just be a one-year term. We will, you know, revisit this.
It'll be the same three of us, we know that it's a multi-year is the goal.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
We just want to kind of see how the first year goes.
What I think it does is it keeps us revisiting this.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely want to revisit it, but like I said, I just feel like if.
Well, we have to revisit it, we have the items, we have to know where they're gonna be, we need to make sure they're kept safe and all of that, so this will, you know.
Okay, so, Marlene, do you want to change that wording?
Yes, I'll make that change and then.
Send me a copy and send a copy to the Historical Society.
Oh, we could vote it tonight with that change.
We can vote it tonight with the one year, with the change.
Yeah, and then it's done.
And then when they stop in to sign documents, I'll make sure that this is.
No sense of delay.
Yeah, and I would just say memorandum of agreement term, a one-year term shall be effective from the date of this agreement.
Yeah.
Not initial, just a one-year term and then we'll revisit it next year.
Okay.
We'll revisit it before this next year, we'll, you know, we'll take it up right after the first of the year.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hatfield and the Hatfield Historical Society Incorporated.
With the change.
With the change made under Section E, or excuse me, Section F, for a one-year term.
Second.
Okay, a motion made in second. Any further discussion, Ed, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi, thanks Amy. We got there.
So we will, so Marlene, if after the.
We'll see how everybody reacts, because everybody else has to sign now too.
Well, good luck.
Oh, that was not already agreed on by the other parties?
Well, we just made changes to what's been agreed on.
The change that was just made, they, yeah, not aware.
I just, it's really minor, we could, yeah, I mean, yeah, they, usually agreements have a term, not a rolling thing, so.
Last agreement was just rolling since 1972.
Well, that's.
That's my experience of it.
So what I, what I was just about to say was that, Marlene, what I'd like to do is right after the holidays next year, so like January of next year, bring it up then, let's revisit it then, so that it gives us a little bit of time to think, and in all likelihood, we're gonna discuss the, you know, the storage issues and everything in the meantime, but then, you know, work on it enough in advance so that we can look at it a longer term for the next agreement.
Okay, okay, great. So, Marlene, you'll send that to both me and to the Historical Society?
I will.
Fantastic, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on this, because I know this has been a long process.
Yes, it has. Yes. Are you gonna go off for a second?
I wasn't going to, but, why, do you want to break?
I'm gonna come in, I'll just have to come in.
Yeah, well, we should shut the, I think John could just shut the camera off.
Yeah, can we shut the camera? We'll be back. Once again, joined by our Finance Committee, because it is budget season and we painstakingly go through all of our submitted budgets from our various departments. So should we start with the capital improvement plan, the recommendations of capital planning? Okay. So Sean and I are gonna do this tonight. This committee is comprised of David Keer, Kristi Boudreau, as the School Committee Representative, myself from the Select Board, and Sean from the Finance Committee. And we've had a good solid handful of meetings going through the various capital, requested capital items from different departments, and so we just want to put forward, you know, the projects that our committee thought should move forward and maybe a little bit of information, either about them or maybe potential funding sources. So there's, there's a spreadsheet, does everyone have this? Well, I think I'm gonna use, no, I think I'm gonna use the narrative sheet.
Yep.
We have both. And I'm just gonna go, they're sort of laid out here department by department, and the Town Administrators submissions, vital record storage, which has been identified as a priority of moving them up to storage facility up at the water plant, get them out of the flood zone area, has been identified as a priority, but we do not have a dollar figure on that.
No, we don't yet, and so, and I do not expect, or I'm not expecting that this be funded for FY '23, but I do need to get a cost for that.
Okay, so that is not.
At least getting it on the capital plan.
Okay.
And even if it's for the following year.
Okay, so you are not looking for that funding, okay.
Not for '23.
Okay. And then the design and modification for the bathroom upstairs to make it handicap accessible, where, it looks like that's gonna be about $50,000, that's been identified as a priority.
Can you give me a 30-second, what's the plan for that upstairs?
Not in 30 seconds. I don't think we know.
But we're gonna put this bathroom.
Do the bathroom, because I think it's gonna be used for public something, it's gonna be used, regardless of what it's gonna be used for.
From the Building Inspector, Darryl.
Right.
No, 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 I have no problem with that, I was just like, I mean, are we gonna start being able to have meetings up there again like we used to, because now we have an elevator, so in theory, people could go up?
I think the short answer is, if the upstairs is used, the bathroom needs to be in working order, in working condition. If it's used for any sort of meeting space, office space.
Or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I have no problem with the.
Because it's there, if it wasn't there, we probably wouldn't have to add one, but, you know, you've got to bring the, what you have up to code is what we're, that's our understanding.
Right, so.
And we, and just to be clear, well, this is from capital improvement, we haven't decided, we have yet to decide how we're funding some of these things, is that correct?
Right, some are identified as ARPA and, and you'll, if you sort of cross-check it with the spreadsheet, you can see.
Yep.
So, so this, Sean, I'm reading this, the narrative isn't really complete, so the air purifiers for town offices is on here as a priority, but that's with ARPA funds, that's recommended to be.
And that is.
Thought we already did it.
We did.
Oh, so maybe that's why he didn't put it on the, but it's still towns, people, you know, these are things, okay.
That is done, yeah.
One sec, back to the bathroom, there is some money left in the project from downstairs renovation that could be repurposed, so Lori and I are working on that list of projects because I don't know the dollar figure at this point, but we will have one before our meeting with you guys, because there is a pool of money that was assigned to this building that didn't get used.
Right.
So it could be offset.
Yeah, not the whole thing, I don't think, but some of it.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so again, the lists diverge here, Sean.
Yep.
There is, now we're moving on to Fire Department. The, Bob has submitted a grant to get a ladder truck, and he's probably on here if you have questions. It's a very expensive, like, $1 million ladder truck, but if he gets the grant, the town's portion would only be $60,000. I asked the questions, if it will fit in the current building without any problems retrofitting, kicking other equipment out, he said it would. And I also asked the question about our personnel being able to operate it with just the customary amount of training that you'd get with any new engine, and he said yes. But again, that's contingent on getting a grant. So obviously, that's a really large purchase for $60,000 if the grant comes through.
It's a 5% match.
It's a 5% match, so.
So 95% of it is.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hard to argue with that. So I'm not sure, Bob, when you might find out about that grant?
They're supposed to start making announcements by May.
Okay, did I miss anything in my, okay.
Nope, that was perfect.
That's great.
Okay.
Good job, Chief.
So if we consider using ARPA for that, we could wait for the grant announcement.
Right.
Because we wouldn't need to appropriate it at town meeting.
Right.
So then we could just wait, find out if we get the grant.
If we don't get the grant.
We just don't, yeah, if we don't get the grant, we don't spend the $60,000.
Yeah. Which if we go free cash, we'd obviously have to appropriate it and then we wouldn't know whether we're gonna spend it or not.
Yep. Right, and then if we didn't spend it, we'd be another year before we could get it again.
Right, so Chief Larity is also recommending replacing Engine 2, which is a 1989 Ford pumper with a mini pumper. This is the truck that is housed in North Hatfield. The cost would be $325, and the new equipment would be more maneuverable and would allow access to areas of town where traditional pumpers have a difficult time getting to. So that was put forward. And it was listed here as maybe a priority depending on the grant funding to replace Engine 1, to replace, to get the ladder truck.
Well, that's, if we get the ladder truck, are we trying to do, I guess that's my question for capital, for you guys, are we, if we get the ladder truck, are we gonna wait on this or?
We asked Bob, Bob, your feeling was they were, I'll defer to Bob because he can explain the difference. They are different, but it's a lot of big, brand-new apparatus in one year. So Bob, if you, did you want to speak to that?
Sure, so the replacement of Engine 2 has actually been on capital for a while, it's gotten pushed back a couple of years. It should have actually already been replaced three years ago, based off of our previous tenure plan. Obviously, Engine 2 is 33 years old, and there's about a dozen or so homes that our current apparatus can't reach, and so the mini pumper would be able to get us to those properties. It would also be able to be used for some other calls, you know, power lines down and things like that, which will save us overall operating costs and maintenance costs because it's gonna get better fuel mileage and it's cheaper to change tires or oil changes and all those things. So it will kind of save as a whole throughout the course of the year, and it'll be able to handle more than just, you know, a couple of calls here and there, so it will be used more often. As far as it compared to the ladder, the ladder, if I were to get it through the grant, is replacing Engine 1, which is now coming up on almost 22 years old, so that was due to be replaced in a few years anyway. So they are kind of two separate projects. The ladder is essentially out there because of the grant application.
And I asked a question, if we get the ladder truck, why can't we move Engine 1 up to North Hatfield, but it wouldn't fit, is that right?
Right.
Right now, it, there's very few vehicles that could fit at North Station. It's a very small garage, it's only about 28 feet long, so the mini pumper and our brush truck are the only two vehicles that currently would fit at North Station at all.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other fire article for, that was moved forward was replacing PPE and personal protective clothing, which it would be six sets of the turnout gear for members of the department, those are done on a rotating basis so that people have, you know, current and safe turnout gear.
And that's $15,000.
That's $15,000.
Yep.
And then the utility, Bob, is coming on to the lease program.
That would be the plan, yes, is to roll it on to one of the leases with some of the other vehicles that were mentioned during capital.
Do you want to speak to the need for the utility vehicle?
So it was actually listed for next year for the replacement, the current vehicle is a 2008 that was actually purchased through the Fire Association and donated to the town. The vehicle does smoke, it has a leak in it that we found out about a year and a half It has a leak in it that we found out about a year and a half after we purchased it. I've spoken to the mechanic. They're not really looking to spend any money, because it could be $7,000, $8,000, $9,000 to really affect the repair on a truck that's got 180,000 miles on it. So it was just, capital brought it up to possibly move it up a year, just because we were looking at other loans. And this vehicle would be, the one that I put in is actually cheaper than the original price that was on the tenure. I think I had originally in there for 65, and I lowered it down to 55. We're gonna go with a little bit of a smaller vehicle that's more beneficial, more fuel efficient, but still serve the needs of the department.
This is the chief's vehicle?
Nope, this would be the pickup truck. So the full-timer uses it to do inspections and run around town. We send it for training to the Fire Academy, and then we use it for weekly training as a kind of a personnel transport, carry some equipment, hoses. But we also use it after fires and things like that, pick up all the dirty hose, bring it back before we hang it, or wash it and hang it up.
The hose doesn't go back on the engine?
If it's dirty and wet, no, you're not gonna put it back on, because then it's gonna turn to mold and it'll degrade the hose, and then we're gonna start replacing hose quicker.
So, I mean, but I do wanna clarify something. You said capital planning brought it up a year. I thought you brought it, I mean, I don't remember that capital plan, planning moved it forward a year.
Yep, this was, it was on for next year, and then because of some of the other vehicle purchase, I know David Keir is the one that kinda brought it up and said, you wanna get a price? And to consolidate and move, put four vehicles on for a new lease, that's where this one kinda got moved forward a year, or into FY '23 purchase, where I had it originally listed for FY '24.
Yeah, my understanding is this would not move up if we don't, if we decide not to do the lease.
Right.
The only reason we're doing it that...
It's the extra lease, right.
You have two vehicles this year and two next year, and it doesn't make sense to do it over two years.
Right.
Or do two vehicles, so you'd wanna do four, and so you have to move this and the COA van forward a year, if you're gonna do a lease.
What, why are we not doing, why are we not doing the lease?
No, 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 if we are going to do the lease, it doesn't make sense.
An additional lease. There's some talk about an additional lease.
I understand, right. That's the, yeah, not...
We only had two vehicles on in 2023, and we had two on in 2024, but it doesn't really make sense to do the lease for two vehicles. So we moved the two 2024s up to 2023. But if we decide for whatever reason that we're not gonna do the lease, I'm saying, I'm only saying it because the decision hasn't been made yet that we would, then we wouldn't necessarily do this this year. We might decide to, but we might decide to wait till 2024.
Don't we, isn't this the last year of our, of our lease, or...
One of them.
One of them?
So we have one, two, three, four outstanding to date. One of the last payments is in July '22, and then the other ones have multiple years left, '25, '23, and '26.
One of the leases is the ambulance.
Right.
Right?
And that has multiple years.
And that has multiple years. And then I don't know what the other...
So that, I believe the ambulance is the $53,630, right?
Yes.
Then there's one for $12,956 that has one more year. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. And then the current new one that you just approved last year is $129,000. Still have equipment outstanding through '24.
And then we have one that's coming off in this.
Yep, which is $31,449. So he did get a quote to do the lease, to do the cruiser, the COA van, a pickup for Phil, and this utility vehicle is what we got quoted for a lease at this point.
Right, and we'll get to those other vehicles further down.
I didn't see this, but I have...
Okay. So, yeah, maybe next week we can get a printout on the leases, and we can look at it more in depth and decide, or at least try to come up with a plan.
Can I ask a question? What happens with these vehicles that we're replacing? How do we retire them? Do we get funds back? Do we trade them in? How does that work?
Well, usually, you hang onto stuff for a really long time and then surplus them when they're...
Okay, so there's no like trade-in value coming back to us?
I don't know, Bob, is there a trade-in on the fire truck?
I didn't seek out what they would give us for a trade-in, but I know in other apparatus that, at least the fire department, we have traded in the ambulance. We had a $5,000 or $10,000 trade-in. When we replaced Engine 3, we got $10,000 or $15,000 for a couple of vehicles. So we have gotten some trade-in value over the last few vehicles that we've purchased. I can't speak to everybody over town.
Right, I mean, the other, if we don't get any trade-in, the other option is it goes to surplus.
Right.
And when it goes to surplus, you could get little or a lot, depending on who bids on it.
Yeah, it goes to like a bid. It's like basically an auction. But typically, the town hangs onto vehicles for really long time. They're not usually...
But we're not gonna hang on to like that pickup truck, that's, that, that vehicle that's smoking?
Well, right, and it's not, there's no, right.
We don't want that.
Right, right.
That would go down the road.
Yes, and quickly, yes.
Yeah, it's an 08 with 200,000 miles on it, so...
Right, yeah, yeah, but that, that, that's a very good question.
So just moving down, just, just to revisit, the Lifepack AEDs and the air purifiers for the trucks were $19,5500 respectively, and those were already funded through ARPA funds. Those were also on the fire department capital plan. For the police department, they are looking to replace a 2014 cruiser. It's eight years old. It has 164,000 miles. This, there is no money within the current leases, so that was part of what triggered considering another, an additional lease.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, that vehicle is the backup cruiser that's, that's used? Is that my understanding?
Yes, I think so.
Right, so it's not, there's two main cruisers or vehicles that are used, and this is the backup cruiser? I don't know. I don't see, see if the chief, chief is on, but...
He's probably not on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, is that what you have in your notes?
I have in my note that this is, well, I, at the time, we thought it was 2013, but whatever, that this is the backup.
Okay.
And that would come off of the state bid? You know, so it's a reasonable price?
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right, DPW, of course, the big one, is the upgrades at the wastewater plant that we discussed last week. That's the $12.1 million. The replacing Ferry Street and King Street Pump Station generators and transfer switches, those were already identified as ARPA fund projects. Install water filtration on well at wastewater treatment plant. That was also already identified as a project we would do with ARPA funds.
Which list are you going off of?
The summary.
Well, we're kinda going back, and I'm going back and forth.
This way and that way.
Yeah, it's going...
Just question, oh, well, doesn't, my understanding now is, now is that if we do the wastewater plant, that includes water?
Yes, it does. It includes the water.
It includes the water line.
Right.
So we wouldn't need the $20,000?
Not, not to do, not to do...
Right.
I mean, and if...
Yeah, I mean, depending if it passed.
Well, right, I mean, but, I mean, honestly, what we're using the water for there is drinking primarily, and maybe washing hands. I mean, like, for a year to decide whether or not we're gonna do the project, we could bring in a lot of bottled water for $20,000, you know what I mean? Like, or a lot less than that. We could bring in all the water they need.
I believe that this actually started before we got into the whole wastewater treatment.
It did.
So that's why this is here, and then, and then all of a sudden, we got word, hey, you guys are, are gonna be getting...
Right, and it includes the water.
Which includes the water, so it's, right, so that's why that is still on here, I would imagine.
But now, do you just wanna see, I mean, like, if we don't wind up doing the sewer plant project, then I guess next year we could spend the $20,000, but...
Well, but we could also put it on here, and then...
But if we did it on ARPA funds, we could just...
We could do it anytime.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Right. So we could just, it would be held off until we find out about the sewer project.
Yeah, tell the vote.
Okay. Okay, and then finally, replacing the compactor up at the transfer station. That's $80,000. There was, that was thrown out as a potential ARPA project as well, but it could also be...
Free cash.
You know, yep, free cash. Okay, so, let's see. This, they, they don't, I'm sorry to be jumping back and forth here, but they don't go in order of the spreadsheet. So I guess I'll go, this is where it gets confusing, because I don't wanna miss anything going back and forth here. Under the water department, Phase 1, expand the water main on Straits Road to Depot Road. This would, then when Phase 2 is completed, it would create the loop to increase the water pressure. So this would be, this is gonna be done in-house, and it was identified as a priority.
I had a discussion with the DPW director about this, and... And, and I believe he, he thought we could, we could, we could, we, that it didn't necessarily need to be done this year right away. Because there could be some other options to developing the loop, rather than going down Straits Road where there's no houses. And, anyway. But that was a discussion I had with him, so I certainly would like, you know, before we decide anything on this, I would, I would encourage us to have a discussion with him on this.
Well, he'll be here next Tuesday, so we should go over this...
Go over, we can go over all of his capital.
The DPW-related capital expenses.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll put that down as... I, I thought he did have it listed as something he wanted to do when he came to us, Sean.
Yeah, I mean, I think he had a bunch of priorities, and...
Yeah, he has, he does have a lot of priorities.
Clearly, clearly, I think, my understanding, I really don't remember all the way they were ordered, but the critical priority, I thought, number one, was the Raymond Ave to School Street.
Right.
Was his number one, and then number two, I think, was the switch, generator switch thing at the, that we...
Ferry Street, that we just discussed, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And those were both things that we had already identified as ARPA fund projects, no?
They certainly could be.
But no, I thought that was part of what we already voted on.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we did, well, I think at the time, I mean, the sort of deciding between ARPA and free cash, I mean, we had a conversation at one time when we had a different understanding of what ARPA was allowing us to do.
No, this was the last big discussion we had about ARPA, where we went through, and we had an itemized list of the things that we were prioritizing and working on first, and I thought those two projects were on that. It was after we knew that it could be done for more than infrastructure.
You do have a current copy of the ARPA report and DPW items.
Yeah, I think there's just a question of, do we wanna have a conversation, like, of all these items, not whether we should do them or not, I mean, I think we're committed to doing those. We want to do those, but do we wanna decide whether we wanna do them for free cash or ARPA? Does it make sense, in other words, to hold off spending ARPA money? Only because, only because it doesn't require appropriation, so if emergencies come up, it's easier to use than any other money we have. And that's not to say you don't spend any of it, or whatever, it's just something to consider when we're deciding how to fund all this stuff.
Well, so on the, on what was decided, we do have the, the generator and transfer switches on there.
Yep.
But I don't see the, the School Street Raymond Ave, so maybe we could split it. So one goes ARPA and one goes free cash.
Right, we could decide to do whatever we want with that, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because we do have a significant amount of free cash.
Right.
We probably do wanna spend some.
Yeah. And just, just on this first page of the spreadsheet, and then we can flip to the next page, there is replacing the DPW director's vehicle. That would be part of the lease program we discussed earlier. He would be getting just a pickup.
My understanding is that is dead?
Dead, 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 really bad, I guess.
So nothing for that?
The vehicle, you mean?
The vehicle.
Oh, yeah, I saw it get towed back again the other, it went flying by the house. For parts.
Okay, so, moving down the narrative portion of this, DPW facilities, replacing the pedestrian bridge over Mill River, that's on Prospect Court. That's potential CPA funding. I, I can't really speak too much to that project. I think that should be something we talk to Phil about.
Well, Bob Wagner will be here next week to address that. Community preservation committee has some questions regarding that project.
And Phil will be here.
For which project? Repairing what?
The pedestrian bridge.
Replacing the pedestrian bridge.
And that's CPA funding, anyway.
It would be CPA funding, right.
It's a town meeting.
It would go to town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then purchasing a boiler for the emergency services building for Radiant Heat, $15,000, that was identified.
Yeah, that's in place.
Did we...
The Radiant Heat is in place. I don't know if we talked about it, but...
Well, it's first I've heard of it.
It's in place. It's never been used, because there's nothing to...
Connected to.
Connected to.
Oh, so...
You mean like no power, or no...
No boiler of any kind, or no, you know...
Heat generator.
Yeah, so it's installed in the building, it's just not ever being used, because there's those, other heaters are in there, you know, but what kind I'm talking about, but...
All those overhead heaters?
Yeah, exactly.
Moding heaters?
The modding heaters, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's pretty cheap money relative to the, to having the system, you know, we have the system in place already.
Doesn't function.
We just don't run it, yeah.
Okay.
Having the car in the driveway, but no keys, right?
Right.
We got no gas.
So then moving down to the highway portion of this, there's the drainage repair on Raymond Ave and School Street that we spoke about already, installing...
We already approved that with the last ARPA's, right?
Well, see, it's not on here. I thought we did too, Darryl.
Maybe next week we can get, I would love, like, two pieces of paper, like, this is what we, what, what we did with ARPA, and then this is what we're thinking about with free cash.
You should have this.
Okay, well...
Yeah, we have.
That is current up-to-date.
Yes, and I did think it was on there too, Darryl. It's not, it's not listed on here.
Yeah, because I thought we talked about, but anyway, it doesn't...
But that's what we were just talking about, that maybe, maybe there's those two projects, maybe one is ARPA and one is free cash. You know, so maybe you do...
I mean, because it seems like a priority anyway, so...
Yeah, it was the number one priority for Phil.
I mean, so, so we'll do, one, one way or another, we'll figure out how to fund it.
The flashing pedestrian crossing signals were identified as ARPA. They were already voted on, correct?
I don't think so.
I don't believe so.
I don't remember that one.
I don't think those ever were on the list.
Those, no.
So those would be...
And where are they going?
Yeah, where are they going?
Across the street.
Yeah, and this, aren't there more than one? I think there...
I think there is one, right?
Down near...
But there's one here.
Right by the parking lot.
Main Street and, what's the, is it North Street?
But I think they were gonna be at additional park, crosswalks here in the center of town, where you have between the two schools and...
The next one down, where I crossed it at. I noticed it doesn't have one.
Tree removal and installing fence on Elm Court. That would allow the DPW to better use that town-owned property down there for sort of an extension of their yard and some of the things that they do. And then an Elm Court, erecting a storage building down at Elm Court. They're looking...
Kind of storage building, are you building for $94,000?
Pardon?
A fabric building, is my understanding.
Right.
Metal.
I understand, yeah, I, yeah, yep, and I just think in today's day and age, and the way costs are going up, I would be very concerned that, even with a fabric building, by the time you get done with doing basics, like bringing in a little power and pouring a little concrete, that you could do anything less than $100,000, unless it's a very small building.
I'm, I'm not sure, but I think the intention was to store materials too, so they may...
Oh, just materials, so they don't need power, they don't need any of that.
Yeah, again, I mean, some of this, when Phil is here, he can speak to this a little bit better. And, and, you know, I wish David was here, because he goes deeply into these.
Right.
And then the pole barn garage doors up at the DPW yard for $15,000. I'm looking at this spreadsheet.
Are those new doors, or...
I don't think there are doors. There's no doors, I don't think, up there.
Yeah, there was a project for that a few years ago.
Well, I know we had to shore up the roof or something a few years ago.
Yes.
But, but, yeah.
I don't see those on this plan, this spreadsheet at all.
Are we afraid some of the equipment's gonna get a little snow on it or something, I mean...
We'll talk to Phil.
Yeah.
But I don't even see them on this spreadsheet. Am I missing this?
Faces the sun...
Pole Barn Highway.
But did we...
Oh, okay, yep, I see them now. Okay. Um, and then there's, um, moving on to, there's, you know, there's, let's see, I just want to make sure we went through all of the ones that are here. Um, I mean, we have on the plan, chip seal, crack seal various streets, 240,000, but that would be chapter 90 funds. So it shows up on here, but it's not, you know, um, anything we need to, um, and I'm just making sure we have all, everything that, because he, the way that David did these, they don't go in order, um, from one to the, one document to the other. Um, we talked about the logic controller at the water filter, water filter plant.
I think we, that was on the other list, right?
What?
Was, was that on the ARPA list, the water controller?
Yes.
I thought we put that on there, yes, yeah.
Yes, okay, that's right, it's listed here as ARPA.
Broadband, Maple Street, fil, yeah, filtration plant logic controller, it's on the ARPA list.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm not missing anything here, sorry, just bear with me for a second. Um, the broadband extension at the water treatment plant was decided, I believe, already for ARPA funds.
Yeah, that was taken care of, that's the done.
Okay, so I think, for the most part, that takes care of the DPW, with the exception of the things that we want to ask Phil when he's in next week. And then, the school department, um, replace student desks and furniture at SA and HES, 20,000 dollars, that was identified as a priority. Um, the technology replacement, which is the ongoing, um.
Chromebooks?
Chromebooks.
Yep.
20,000 dollars, that was identified as a priority, um, and those were the only ones we had, um, on for this year for the school. So just to give you a sense of, um, what's, what's out there.
Just to bring it up, although it's not on this year, the roof, um, at HES is, uh, it is going to have to be done. The reason it's not on this year is because it doesn't yet qualify for school building assistance.
Right.
And next year it will. So it, it really actually does need to be done, it's just that if we could get a significant, uh, state allocation potentially next year, 40, 50, 60, whatever it is, percent, somewhere in that range. Um, and so, we put it off for a year, and they're going to be able to patch it this year, you know, to hopefully, um, not have any problems, but, you know, if we're going to set aside, like, if the ARPA money's good till 2027, or whatever, we're going to think, I think we should just think about that, you know, that next year, we're going to have to do that, one way or the other, probably, so we should just keep it in mind that, you know, we can push out some of that ARPA money to use part of that, or whatever we decide to do, but that that is on the horizon.
Two other things, or three, excuse me, three other things on the horizon at the schools, is the ongoing need to redo the parking lots at both.
Yes, which we're only pushed up the list because of the roof.
Yes.
So, the roof became the number one priority.
Right, so, they, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're very bad at both schools.
Yes, they are.
And then the other one is, um, sort of a redesign and, um, renovation of the office, the school office. Um, and, and I think it would be, I think it's an important project, um, you know, it would certainly look a lot better, it would be a lot more functional, there'd also be an improved safety aspect of how people enter the building, so you'd have to go through the office to get into the building, as opposed to now, you're, you just walk in, I mean, you have to be let in, but once you're in, you don't, you, you're just walking into a lobby with access to the hallways and everything. Um, and, and I think that it's high time we take a look at the, um, you know, the school nurse is right there, basically, in the office, there's no privacy, it's a very small facility. So, there was talk of this, there was, they looked into some, the, the design cost, I think, came in a little higher than they thought, so it was, it's being put off, but it's not going away.
Yeah, so you're probably, on the roof, you're probably talking about 250,000 dollars being the town's portion, anyway, so, you know, if you, if we had some money put away with intent to use it for that, it might make that a lot easier to swallow next year, when we actually have to, have to do it, but.
Are you talking about the roof or the office?
The roof.
Yeah.
Because that, you know, we, I mean, we have an idea about how much that is, actually.
The roof, yeah.
Office, we, yeah.
Yeah, the office, we don't know, because you'd have to go through a whole design process, and there's some real space constraints there, as you know, and how it's laid out, it's pretty small, so, so that is out there, and that is something that we, we did discuss at the Capitol Plan, meet, Capitol Plan and Meetings. So, it's a long list.
Good job, guys.
Big, big items.
Yeah.
So.
So, continue discussing.
Yeah, we'll just need to let Phil know to make sure he can address.
To be able to speak to all his.
I'm sorry, I just have one difference, I wanted to just, oh, okay, all right, my spreadsheet just wasn't, uh, up to date totally.
Okay, I think David updated that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we, now it's time to get to the budgets.
We have the library, they've been waiting, so.
Oh, Eliza, you're here waiting?
Sorry, Eliza.
Eliza? Hi, how are you, thanks for waiting.
Hello?
Hi.
Great.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, and we can see you now, too.
Do you want to talk just a little bit about your, your budget?
Yeah, do you want to go through?
Just so townspeople can get an idea of what, what you're looking for?
Sure, my budget is almost the same as last year, um, the salary is the same, and then, expenses, we have a slight increase, um, just based on our network costs going up, but it's actually only a hundred dollar increase, it's not very much.
Right.
And the budget covers building maintenance, staffing, materials, all the stuff we need to run the library.
Right, and, and, and there's always, your budget needs to go up so much, so you get, and I can't remember this, you know, the, the library grant.
Yes.
And, and does it do that?
So, the state requires that our, our budget go up, um, and, so, we have to, it has to average, um, two and a half percent every three years, but because last year we got a significant enough increase, we're actually fine for this year.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're, that, that's, that's good to know, we always just like to make sure, we don't want to make, make sure you're not going to lose money.
Right, right, because that's a significant piece of funding, yeah.
Absolutely.
I checked to see that, and she always, Eliza, you're so good about making a note on your budget.
Yes.
To include that.
Thank you.
That's great, I don't have any questions, anybody?
Does anybody have any questions for Eliza and the library? That was it. Eliza, thank you.
Yes, and thanks for everything you do down there, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Eliza.
Thanks.
So, we did have originally on the agenda for tonight, the DPW, we've deferred that discussion to next week, so we're going to go to Marlene for a pile of budgets here.
Okay, so, the first one, let's see.
Well, do we want to go out of order, I mean, Amy's on again.
Oh, Amy.
And right now, they're last.
I was going to cover those, but if Amy's on, I would like to speak to it.
I didn't know you were covering all of them, that's fine.
Yeah, those are, those are very, you know, small budgets.
No, no, that's fine.
And, um, but since Amy is, uh, joining us, if she'd like to.
I didn't mean to put her on the spot, I just didn't, you know.
Amy, did you want to speak to the historical commission budget? I don't have it here, Marlene.
You don't?
It's not in this pile you gave me anything.
Hi.
Oh, I didn't.
Hello again, Amy.
Here.
Hi.
You can give that back to me.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, I just, you know, I felt like I should be here, um, I think you can see our budget is, uh, less than last year, because, uh, last year, you very generously gave us some, uh, funds to, um, migrate our data and our database, which, that's been a roaring success, um, and, you know, pretty much, other than that, uh, the same as always, we're maintaining the Farm Museum, um, is there anything, anything else you need to know?
No, that's great, thank you.
No, that's pretty straightforward.
Indeed.
I'm, I'm all set, I don't know if the finance committee has any questions.
No, no, yeah, no. Yeah, looks great, thank you, Amy, we appreciate you staying on, and we appreciate all that you do, that you guys do for Hatfield, thank you.
Yep.
Well, thank you, I appreciate what you guys do, too, you do a lot more work than I do, believe me.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, take care.
Yep, you too.
Okay, so that was.
Fast.
Fast and, a reduction, how, that's great. Okay, so, I'm looking here, Marlene, I don't see HCT.
For, for speed's sake, Marlene, some of those, the, the smaller budgets, since we did historical, the other ones listed, and I don't have the agenda in front of me, they were all relatively small, recreation, were there any changes?
There weren't any cha.
Anything we really need to discuss?
As you, not really, nothing, nothing has changed, they're, they're all the same, the animal inspector, animal control officer's budget, um, has stayed the same, and same with ZBA, um, recreation, as you know, there's a revolving fund, last year, they needed, um, additional funds, we added a 5,000 dollar line item into the operating budget, and they would continue, like to continue to receive that 5,000 dollars, they, they feel it is necessary.
Recreation?
Recreation Commission, yes, yeah.
But they're not on our, oh, they are on our agenda, I don't have them here.
They don't have a sheet yet.
They don't, they don't have a sheet, and, and on the agenda, but that's not different from last year. It's not different.
It's not different, no, it hasn't increased, the 5,000 is, right.
And if I'm not mistaken, we had gone years funding it, and then, we, we didn't fund it because of all the money that was in their revolving account, because we were told, accounting service said they need to spend some of that down, instead of, so, now we're back the other way, right, right.
That's right, yes.
So, I'm sorry, I need to backtrack a little bit, because we do have the, um, the letter from Superintendent Wood about the costs associated with installing the freezer. Oh, you're going to after?
Or, or you can, I mean.
Okay.
Oh, we have John, okay.
Uh, is the superintendent on?
He is not able to join us tonight.
And, and we really, we talked about this last week.
Right.
And so I got an email this week from the superintendent saying, what, what should he do, and I suggested he, you know, send a letter to Marlene that would go to us, and, um, he's going to be, um, the freezer, um, which was funded last year, um.
For Smith Academy.
For Smith Academy, um, there's going to be, he needs 9,260 dollars and 58 cents for installation costs, I guess they have to upgrade some of the electrical or whatever to do it, which they weren't aware of, and so, um, I, I think, I mean, obviously, we want the freezer to work, and so, we have a couple of different options, we could use ARPA funds, we could use, we could wait.
Finance Committee reserve.
Use free cash, or easiest might be finance reserve.
Yeah, Michael had contacted me last week, and, uh, yeah, they didn't feel comfortable using their operating budget to take care of that.
Well, that's, yeah, that's fine, it's just, I mean, I, my gut reaction would be not to do it as a, like, prior year deficiency situation.
Yeah, no.
My gut reaction would be to either use ARPA or finance reserve.
I think we have.
Cover it this year.
What do we have in finance, I mean, we still have a significant amount of money in.
Yeah.
Finance reserve, right?
Have you spent any?
We've spent, that's one thing you've spent, I can't remember what.
It's not much.
There has been one item.
It's not much, so.
There's probably 30.
Yeah, my, my suggestion is that we would, we would fund it out of finance reserve and.
I mean, it's sort of an unexpected expense from last year's budget, so that's what finance reserve is for.
The only thing I can't remember is, Marlene, is this something that he has to know, does he notify the accountant, and then, and then it goes that way, or can we vote on it today and?
The finance reserve?
Yeah.
Um, well, we do that form, we can fill out that form, the finance committee, you can still vote it anytime, and then.
Why don't you vote it?
You still need to sign that form.
And then, and then you can bring it next week, and we'll just sign it.
And then I'll send it to the accountant.
The accountant usually just checks to make sure.
She does.
Everybody's actually there, but.
She verifies the balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So you want to vote tonight?
Yeah, we might as well.
Well, you guys vote it, we don't, right?
Yeah, so, so I would entertain a motion.
If we don't have the money, we won't do it.
Yeah, to, yeah.
Hope not.
Right, to, we need a motion to fund 9,260 dollars and 58 cents, um, for the final costs of repair and installation of the freezer at Smith Academy, which was purchased by the town last year, and to do so through finance reserve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I hear a second, thank you, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, Nick?
Probably be up and running just in time for school to end for the year.
Yes, and, but.
But that's okay, it'll be there for many, many, many years to come.
So, so, yeah, so, Marlene, next week, you'll bring that?
I will.
Form and.
I'm glad the freezer is finally being replaced, it's had stalagmites and stalactites, whatever those things are called, for, for years, for years, I mean, I don't know how often the seal got replaced, and how often thermostats got replaced, I mean, it was, it was just limping along, it was just a matter of time.
We talked about it for a number.
Yeah, well, I was on the other side of the house, and I remember, it's like, come on, man.
I know.
Let's get this fixed.
Yeah, I definitely would hate to see it sitting over there, not plugged in.
Right, oh, man, oh, good.
Okay, uh, so, just looking at the, the list of budgets here, as I said, from animal inspector, animal control officer, down to historical commission, everything is the same, um, so the cable TV, uh, budget, you should all have a copy of that, I'll.
I don't, I don't, I don't have those. I mean, if they're the same, it's, it's fine.
Well, it's, the only, there is, it did go up, um, so, you know, that's an enterprise fund.
I was going to say, most of it's funded through.
It is, all of it is funded, um, through, from the enterprise.
I have a question about that, because I totally don't know the answer to this, um, but it occurred to me one day, um, as people, uh, move away from cable TV subscriptions, But it occurred to me one day, as people move away from cable TV subscriptions, what happens to the money that funds the...
The burden amidst the power cable.
Yes, it declines.
Negotiations right now.
Where we are negotiating, yeah.
So we're hoping to go up a little bit of a percentage that we get out of Comcast.
Yeah.
But that's, it's, it's not dropped too much.
Yes, subscribers have dropped slightly.
Oh, they only dropped slightly?
That's a great question.
The money that they get from internet, they don't share with us.
I'm not sure.
I'm not either, so I'm...
That's why we have an attorney.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be interesting to know that, I mean, just because it, you know, unless something dramatically changes, it appears like we're moving in a certain direction here.
Yeah.
And I guess if there is no cable, then we still have to do something. So how do we, what do we do?
Well, the feds will step in then to check the law.
Yeah, something would happen.
The FC signal.
Yeah.
John and Marlene have been in contract negotiations with Comcast and having our attorney, because tis, this is the year, so. So thank you to John and Marlene for that.
Ten years goes by quick.
Yeah.
Did you update this, Marlene, since you have this long starting wage for him? We discussed the other day that the, that he put in for his wage, was it correct?
I should have. Yes, I believe I did.
So did you have...
But I will double-check that, though.
The total budget number? I have 68,250. Is that what you have? Is that what you guys have?
That's what I have.
Yeah, but that was from the budget. That, that was from the handouts we got.
68,250 is the total operating budget.
68,250, but that may change if you change his starting, you know, his salary.
It's 68,250 is the requested for '23.
But now, if you really want to give a 5% increase and have a different amount as the starting wage, because you didn't have a salary line in there correctly?
Well, on the budget spreadsheet, right, is what I, I...
You fixed it over the other side.
I fixed it there, and I believe I did, but I will have to check this, though. So regarding the, the cable TV operations, I am requesting a 5% rate increase for the cable, cable TV manager.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, his, as Brian just mentioned, his, his knowledge and, and experience is very beneficial to the town, and it's been helpful during the negotiation meetings with Comcast, and...
Well, and it's helpful to, I mean, you know, I...
Need a spare room next door. He's here all the time.
People have the ability to know so much more about what's going on.
Right.
Absolutely. So, I mean, it, it is a professional position.
Yeah.
And, and I believe that it warrants...
And this is all funded through that enterprise fund, anyway, right?
Right.
Yep.
So it's not a taxation...
No.
Right. I think that's a very appropriate increase personally.
I do as well.
John does a lot of work, very reliable. I mean, everything's set up when we get here. It's, and I think townspeople really appreciate this, and I think, you know, need to...
Yeah. Well deserved.
John does, does, his, he does the purchasing for, for all equipment, checking it out.
Right.
The one-man band.
1.2 million.
Yep, no problem with that.
Quite a bit.
Yep.
Okay.
The Lori thing?
Yeah, well, Bill, so I did hear on the news that Lori's...
Yeah.
That's an Arpa.
Do you want to take it up now?
Request for ARPA. We could do that. That was, yeah, that was up.
That's the last thing, right? Till the town meeting?
That is the only other request right now.
Yeah.
There's none available.
Lori's request.
We'd probably have to get these two in there and just stick them out.
Do you want to take that out of, take that up now, Diana?
Yeah, let's take it up.
There's an additional request for ARPA funds from the accountant, and this was for, for time that they had put in...
On ARPA.
On ARPA, calculating the revenue loss.
Go figure.
So that's an additional $4,185,000. When I say additional, there were monies that were authorized, I believe, back in January for, for the financial reporting.
Do we, do we vote that, or is that the finance? Both boards vote that?
Select board votes these.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, that the select board approves this use of ARPA funds, $4,185,000, for accounting services relative to ARPA funds.
Tag it.
A motion made in the second. Any further discussion?
Nope, nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then they need to vote it as well, right? Or is it just select board?
Just the select board, just the select, okay.
Okay, so there's other budgets listed here, Marlene?
Yeah, so some of these we can go through very quickly. Annual Town Report, that has not changed, and, you know, we, we get a pretty good deal on, on the printing, so I think we may have turned some money back last year.
Okay.
But I, I didn't want to reduce that, because the cost of...
Right.
Materials is increasing.
Everything's going up.
So, yeah, yeah.
You go, Diana.
Yeah. The next item is the audit in OPEB audits. The audit is Tony Rizzelli's annual audit of the town's financial statements, and then there is a separate firm that does the OPEB reporting. We, there is an increase as a result of the regular annual audit with our auditor, a slight increase, and we may have to have an ARPA single audit. So there's an additional $5,000 that's been, been added for, for that.
Okay.
Did you hand these ones out? Because none of us have.
Yeah, I didn't know where you were.
You don't have the, you don't have the audit?
No. No.
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, I was...
Oh, Town Administrator, so all, yeah, all the, yeah, all the town, the budgets at the Town Administrator. Oh, so nobody has copies of these?
Well, we might, now that we know, I know where to look. I didn't get where you were going with that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now we get it, Marlene.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
So it wasn't, to me, it wasn't clear that you...
I see what you're saying, yes, okay.
So Town Administrator items and the ones down.
And these are other...
We're getting that.
Separate departments or positions.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's try to go through these fairly quickly, if there's not a lot of changes to them.
Yeah. The audit, there is a change there, so I wanted to...
Audit is, yeah.
Well, you just went through that one, right? I don't even have that.
I mean, some of these, you can't not fund, right? I mean, it's an audit, so I'm, you know...
The single audit is on the ARPA list, too, right? For $5,000.
That is, yes, single audit, $5,000.
So it's just...
That is, so that, is that approved for ARPA? It was. So we don't need it in the operating budget, then?
Good.
I don't even remember talking about that.
Yeah, I don't think we have those, Marlene.
It's...
No, you don't, okay. I am sorry. So do you want to wait and, and do these next week?
Do you want to zip through them next Tuesday? Or if there, or if there's really no changes?
Still early.
General liability and property, there is an increase, and that is...
The insurance?
There is every year.
Yeah.
So why don't we, can we, okay. If there's no changes to them, or they're level funded from last year, do you want to go through them, or do you want to...
I would, I would like to know the changes. My, my questions with her budget might talk around technology. We seem to bring that up every year with...
Yep.
What we're doing with new computers, new technology, and then internet, and, not internet, but...
Yeah.
Huh? Like support? Like support.
Right.
Initially, I wasn't increasing it at, at this time, but then the archive social...
I'm sorry, may I interrupt you? But we don't have these sheets in front of us.
We're not talking about them tonight, so let's...
We don't have the sheet.
Put that off to next week, but we'll...
Okay, that's fine. Sorry, I apologize.
And let's make sure everybody...
That's all, you know, no.
So then, are we going to go through this whole list underneath? I know we did some.
Little ones that were, Marlene said there are no changes.
Just no changes, okay.
Yeah, we covered all those.
Okay, so, so next week, we'll do DPW and all of your, your lines, Marlene.
Yes.
Okay. And then maybe the others as well, whatever's left.
Could be our last one, right, till we...
Do you have a spreadsheet you're working on, Marlene?
I do, and I'm prepared to, to show that to you.
Can you just send it to me?
I can do that as well.
Brian, there'll be another one after that, because...
Oh, you guys?
We haven't done accounting, treasure collector, and I don't want to go behind Phil with that amount of number of budgets I have.
Right.
So we'll have...
So we wanted to ask if we, because we, you know, expect that there'll be quite a bit of discussion next week with DPW, and Planning Board will be here. And initially, we had scheduled the financial departments, and we were going to bump those off to the 29th as possible.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Do what we got to do.
Okay.
Okay, so the only other item is the preliminary draft of the town meeting warrant?
So you have a copy of the warrant, and I do have the budget that I'd like to open up and share it with everybody, so whichever you'd like to look at first.
You have the what that you want to open up?
We're going to go, the whole budget?
The operating budget.
Okay.
That we, I just wanted to, you know...
The spreadsheet?
The spreadsheet, the workbook that we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're going to put it up on the screen for us?
I can do that. Do you like to do that now, or look at the warrant articles?
Well, we're talking about the budget. Let's bring the budget up, and then we'll, but I, I guess, what are we looking at?
What are we looking at?
Because, I know, we're, if we're, we haven't gone through all the budgets. No, but I'm, okay.
I'm going to share it. So we should be able to do that.
You haven't made any decisions about anything.